I think we're all here then because Vern's here, Amy's here. So we can start the meeting. I'm Zeta Govan.
Do you want to move over here so I can look?
Oh, no, go right ahead. Or you can stay over here. Yeah, so I'm the Chair of the Environmental and Subnationality Committee on the City Council. And I just wanted to have this meeting with, at the request of some community members, SCANS and SCJC, which is the Springfield Climate Justice Coalition. I want to acknowledge Counselor LeBarclay Bruce, who's on here with us. And we have Alex Sherman from the Forestry Department, Tom Ash from Parks, and Pete Krucheck from Parks. So thank you all for being here. We have Amy Loizell here from SCANS. And Vern MacArthur is from the Springfield Climate Justice Coalition. And Daniel, your last name remind me?
Cerber.
Daniel Cerber, he's from NextGrid. So I just want to thank everyone for being here, for, you know, having this conversation that we want to have today. And the topic of discussion today is the clear cut of trees. And I was just talking to Daniel about the conversation that we've been having at the City Council and among SCANS and others, SCJC, about our urban forests that we like to refer to. And we want to try to, as much as possible, to keep. So we are here because I think you guys are proposing to build a solar farm and possibly clear cutting a lot of trees on that lot. So do you just want to tell us a little bit about that and what the process is?
Sure, we're planning around a two-megawatt ground-mounted solar development. You guys are plenty familiar with the parcel off of Allen Street, near the Stop &amp; Shop. And there's an elementary school around there. And it's mostly a commercial center. We are planning the clear cutting of about, I think, around 14 acres, 11 to 14 acres of trees on an over 20-acre parcel. On the parcel, there are some wetland resources, which we are staying outside of the 100-foot buffer. And a lot of the area right now, I mean, we can tell people do go onto the property. There's garbage dumping in some places. But it is mostly trees. Some of them have been cut at some point. And we can look at the historicals and see that those trees have been growing for, they were cut somewhere around 40 years ago and have all grown back. The project itself will essentially become a meadow underneath the solar panels. So we do a pollinator planting program. So underneath, anywhere where we cut, anywhere that's been cleared, there'll be a pollinator mix planted and monitored. We did have a community meeting. About 20 residents showed up. We have heard their concerns. A lot of them did revolve around screening and stormwater. So we are making adjustments to the plans. That includes a landscape buffer. We were talking to the community, whether they prefer something with more focused on native species and keeping a natural look. Their concern was mostly they'd rather have screening and didn't, were more or less agnostic to what species. Our civil engineer, Fuston O'Neill, was eventually supposed to reach out to the Forestry Department here in Springfield to talk about species with them. I called them before I arrived, and they said that had not been done yet. But that will be incorporated into our landscape plan. The other concerns around stormwater, so we did adjust the plans and add an earthen berm that will be vegetated to make sure no stormwater gets on Allen Street. We're already, obviously, meeting all the DEP standards. And the only other concerns were for construction traffic. And so they recommended that we enlarge the construction apron during, or the entrance apron during construction. So there'd be a wider turn radius for any trucks during that time. So it would stop queuing of cars, so it wouldn't cause queuing of cars. And also asked us to limit our delivery hours at times that would not affect drop-off and pickup times at the elementary school. So we're making all those adjustments to the plans. Feel like we've been pretty receptive to every request the neighbors have brought to us. And that's where we are. I think, I can go through the zoning, but I'm sure you're all aware that this was an as-of-right development in the zone district. We needed to get some over-the-counter permits and a building permit, as always, but this didn't require conditional use, special permit, or site plan review.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for that recap, for that information. So do you want to talk a little bit about what SCANS has been talking about? So Amy Loizell?
Hi, so I'm Amy Loizell, and I'm the President of the Springfield Conservation and Nature Stewardship. And, you know, it's great that NextGrid made those efforts, but there were several people in both the Outer Belt and 16 Acres, as well as East Forest Park, who approached us and were very concerned. They were not satisfied with the plans. And they were interested in talking to our group, other neighbors, residents, this Climate Justice Coalition and Arise for Social Justice, to see if there could be some additional efforts made regarding this solar farm. The key thing that many of them said was, and this is part of SCANS' mission, is that they don't want to see clear cutting of mature trees. And they knew that about six months ago, I actually had the Greater Worcester Land Trust come out to look at this parcel to turn it into our first project for a conservation piece in perpetuity, that we would, as SCANS, work with the city office. And I spoke with a woman in the City Hall Grants Office, and she said she'd be happy to work with us. And we could apply to, there's like three different state grants with millions of dollars available. And I contacted the Energy and Environmental Office of Massachusetts, and they said that they'd be open to us working with the city, but that the city municipality had to receive the funds. And so we worked that out with the grant office. I had the President of Greater Worcester Land Trust come out because they are a very successful and very, very effective urban land trust to preserve urban forests in Worcester. And Worcester has become, you know, they're way ahead of Springfield. I mean, and he walked the lot with us. And as Daniel pointed out, they said that there's enough areas where you can create some walkways, create like a little picnic area, do some trash pickup to keep, you know, the transients or teenagers that might be using it out. And they said it was a great plot for it to be Springfield's initial effort at getting one of these Massachusetts state grants. So we had all that in motion. And then we noticed that there was the initial cutting of trees to go in and do the soil sampling. And then we heard from the residents of the Outer Belt and residents of 16 Acres that they were very concerned about this. As I said, number one, because they, like Zeta mentioned, we know that urban woodlands are the number-one climate change mitigation. And new trees, or half-cut lots, or clear-cut lots, and especially clear-cut lots to put in solar, you're actually like, you are actually releasing carbon to put in renewable energy. I mean, it's a complete oxymoron to clear-cut trees to put in solar. It's just, it's not, it's not good science. And so these residents knew this concern, and they know that the more we are seeing clear cutting, and SCANS has tracked at least 92 lots that have been clear-cut in the last seven years, for a total of, we averaged out, you know, at least 5,000 to 7,000 trees, depending on, you know, what, you know, the calculation of the average. And that this, that this project is just going to add further to the loss of urban woodlands in this area. And we know urban woodlands store carbon, sequester carbon, control flooding and runoff during these extreme weather events. They cool the entire city. It's been proven that, you know, even neighborhoods, you know, a mile or two away are cooled by the fact that there's urban woodlands. And so what we would like to propose is that this not go forward. And we'd like to see a solar farm put on Stop &amp; Shop's parking lot. That, you know, Smith &amp; Wesson in Springfield, and the Reminder Building in East Long Meadow are both great examples of using space that has already cleared. It's already covered in asphalt. It's generating heat, and you can put solar panels over it, reduce the heat of the asphalt, and use the space to generate solar without clear cutting trees, which is not good science for climate change at all. So thanks for letting me share that. And as I said, I am speaking for several residents who couldn't be here today, but they are planning on contacting Stop &amp; Shop and the SNS business as well with their concerns.
Thank you, Amy. Vern, would you like to share your thoughts on this?
Yeah, wow, I have little to add. I missed your name, though, SCANS person.
I'm Amy Loizell, and...
Oh, Amy, yeah, I see your name on emails. Thanks so much. That was very thorough. I am representing the Springfield Climate Justice Coalition, which is a coalition of a number of community-based groups in the greater Springfield area, working to promote climate justice and good responses to threats of climate change. One of which, of course, is to protect urban woodlands, which in themselves are both cooling and carbon sequestering. And it just doesn't make sense to us to release carbon, to cut the trees down, and then to have eliminated the carbon sequestration capacity of that urban lot. The only thing I think I would add, and we were also thinking, man, there's such a huge parking lots right in the neighborhood of that parcel of land. And if you put a solar farm in a parking lot, you're doing the opposite of what you're doing if you cut down woodlands to do that. You're cooling the parking lot as well as generating, you know, good renewable green energy that way. The other thing that I would add to what Amy was saying is, our concern also is that cutting down woodlands in an urban setting for solar is going to generate more negative response from citizens in general. You know, it will heighten resistance to transition. Not across the board, I mean, some people will understand, but it is just such a bad message to send. So we want to say, I mean, we really appreciate, you know, companies that are out putting up solar because we need to generate a lot of solar capacity. So it's not an opposition to the general approach that you're doing. But it just does not make sense in this situation. And I would suggest to Chairperson Zeta that the city try to develop a formula. I mean, I think you could develop a formula for measuring the relative effectiveness where you would estimate the carbon savings from a solar farm and subtract from that the loss of sequestration from tree removal and from the carbon emissions from the process of cutting down the trees. I mean, I really, I really think we have to move in that direction. And so basically, we're asking, you know, companies that do this to consider the community, the forestation impact of the projects that you do as part of your own calculations. So that the net gain, both in terms of community support and in terms of urban habitability, in terms of cooling, and support for transition, is enhanced by a project rather than diminished by a project, which we're afraid would happen here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vern. So I just want to reiterate again, thank you both for commenting. And then I'm going to allow the counselors. Thank you, Counselor Allen, for joining us. That, of course, you know, no permissions are needed from us for this project. They can go ahead if they want to. But again, I just wanted us to have a conversation to be, you know, make you aware, make all of us aware of what's happening. And I think a lot of people might not know, you know, that moving forward, this is what we're going to be tackling in our city. Like you said, so many urban forests, in my opinion, have been cut down so far. And we just want to maybe slow down that process. I know Alex and the Parks team might have some solutions to that, which they've been really good at working on, you know, replenishing some of the trees. But again, when you cut down a big tree like that, it takes a long time for it to come back. So I do want to let the counselors speak, if that's okay with you. Or did you want to interject right?
I just want everyone to know, we have been working on this project for four years. We've invested a lot of money on it to hear that you've been working on this parcel for a similar amount of time. And I'm finding out about these problems today. It's not the best way to get things done. If I found out four years ago that there's major opposition before investments, even giving the Stop &amp; Shop Corporation money for this parcel, this would, it would be a different way to have the conversation.
That's the lack of public information. Like, nobody knew about this until you guys were cutting the road.
Did the owners know that you were looking at their parcel?
The SNS Business Corp., I had contacted them, but they hadn't responded.
Okay, because they're the ones, I mean, I figured.
And again, I think, again, communication, right? Communication, everybody knowing about everything. Because I think as a city counselor, right, my job is not to bring information to the people, right? My job is to get information from the people and bring it back to us so that we could share their concerns, right? Because we work for the people. So unfortunately, you know, four years ago is four years ago, and we're here today. So I don't know if that, anyway, I know a lot of money has been invested. If there could be a pivot, maybe not cutting down 11 acres and maybe cutting down only five, I don't know. But that's beyond. So I do want to allow the counselors an opportunity to speak if they wanted to have any questions or comments at this time. No? Okay, great. Thank you. Alex, did you want to have your input? Alex is our forestry guy. Or anyone from the Parks Department?
The only thing, you know, I haven't, not being part of the planning process here, I haven't seen any plans for the project or anything like that to review. Not that we, you know, the only currently interjection we would have is if there were any significant trees that would be removed on the property. Other than that, there's no permitting or anything from my office that would be required. If, you know, I guess my one question would be, is there any type of forested buffer that's being left between the residential houses on the backside of the property and the solar installation? Or is it just being clear-cut edge to edge?
No, there's a pretty large forested buffer on the backside. And on the west side, there's quite a bit of land. I believe there's about six or seven acres. At the middle, there's a ponding wetland feature. And then there's buffers around, and there's uplands. We'd be more than happy to work to divide the property and give that to the city for any kind of park use, urban forest. You mentioned a picnic area. You know, you're welcome to that land. And we'd be happy to do a partnership like that.
And Alex, he did bring up some plans. Could you email these to him? Or did you email them?
That's how you got them.
I did. Okay, so Alex, he did email us some plans. So I could have the city council staff email them to you so you could review them?
Sure, I'd be happy to take, at least take a look, just for my understanding of the project.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out, those are not, those are still draft plans. We are adding an actual landscape plan. We prefer to plant trees that are indigenous and keep more natural look. The neighbors were the ones that wanted us to have a more manicured landscape plan that concentrated more on a screening than just a natural look. So we'd love your input on that. And, yeah.
That'd be great.
Just have Fuston O'Neill reach out if they have. Or, you know, Counselor Govan can send me the copy that she has. But if Fuston O'Neill have a more detailed, especially from the landscape plan side of things, I'd be happy to take a look and offer my, you know, thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you very much, Alex. Yes, Counselor Allen?
I didn't know. Did Counselor click Bruce want to go?
I didn't see his hand up.
Okay, because I was in after him. So I'm Tim Allen. I'm the city councilor for that part of the town, Ward 7. That's all on Ward 7. And I usually go to the Outer Belt Civic Association, but you guys presented there a couple of months ago. And our city council meeting was in conflict. His meeting just always, Walter's meeting just always be the first Tuesday, and I never had a conflict with it. But he switched them to second Monday, which is a day the city council usually doesn't meet. But ironically, we did meet that night, so I couldn't go. Zeta and I were in the city council meeting. So the information I have is, you know, is incomplete. But the first word we had of your initiative was the dirt road that went in off of Allen Street. Everybody was calling me and calling around a few months ago. What's this dirt road? Eventually, we found out it was something you guys had put in. This is for access to this land. And then eventually, you came to Walter's meeting. I think, I can't speak for Walter. I just saw him a minute ago, but I came right over to this meeting. Who have you been dealing with in the city? Have you?
So Fuston O'Neill, our civil engineers, have been directly dealing with most of the city staff. So we had initial calls with building and planning. And they actually issued us a letter saying that this use was allowed. And I can...
Was that issued by Phil Dromy or by Steve Desaletz?
I did not, I can...
There's a copy of my building is...
It'd be great to know because that is, that's the problem with the communication line is that that letter was given to you without any communication to the city council or the civic associations.
And I'm sure that, you know, the letter was because state regulations say that you can. You know what I mean? Which is fine, and that's their prerogative. But if, I think the community would have known about it, then we could have said, well, you know, let's have a conversation about this. You know, I don't know if it was four years ago that you got that letter or just recently. But again, I think communication is really key. I'm really excited that you would be willing to maybe do some compromise, right? Maybe to have some conservation land on there that the community can use, have some walk space or something like that to prevent the dumping that happens when things are just left alone. So that's something that I think we could continue to talk about. And maybe SCANS and SCJC can maybe work with you guys to talk about that, if that's the way that we're going, right? But clear cutting, I think, you know, 11 to 14 acres, to me anyways, that sounds like a lot, right? Of 20. So just, just my thoughts.
So one of the things I found out when looking into this the last couple of weeks, I sat down with Phil Dromy, who's our, I think his title is Deputy Director of Planning. And he, most of the stuff that goes in, housing developments and things like that, goes through him. And true wills of site, you know, what do you call it? Subdivisions and things like that. Water problems, traffic problems, neighborhood problems, whatever. But Phil told me a week or two ago that solar farms have a different, they're not, they go a different route through city government. They go through buildings, which is Steve Desaletz. I just saw him a minute ago as well. And I haven't spoken to him separately about this. So that's important for you to figure out or let us know.
Yeah, I'll get you the letter.
If it's a building or planning or whoever did that.
So, well, just to, so a lot of towns that adopt a solar bylaw don't have a separate, separate way of doing things. There's own purr, there's own district, just like anything else. And cities or towns that have not adopted a separate solar bylaw then go through the state route, which is just, it's an allowed, it's an allowed and protected use, like building a 40-v or a church in Massachusetts. So it's a problem, not a problem for me, but the problem that you're pointing to is, is that it needs to be incorporated in your zoning, in your zoning rules, which it isn't.
Work on.
Well, I've got a meeting on the zoning thing coming Tuesday. We're relooking at a little bit at some things that have come out. Not a relook at all the zoning, but we're starting to get a group of people together to talk about trees, solar, water, et cetera. And that's this coming Tuesday. So it's not an initiative to redo the zoning. It's an initiative to, because that would be a bigger deal. It would cost money and all that. This is more just to look at what issues have we come across the last few months that we didn't really all agree on, they were handled the right way, kind of thing. And trying to get a voice for the city people to talk about the state laws that they follow and the environmental people, like Amy's group, which I was part of starting that group, to understand that perspective and to understand the perspective of the neighbors, et cetera. So Walter, when he, I've spoken to Walter a couple of times. I spoke to him, usually I speak to him most weeks, several times a week. He's in a lot of communication. And he doesn't have a lot of issues with this, having met with you guys and stuff. His answer is to, I mean, I can attest to this, that Mary Dion, who was the second in charge of that civic association, she and Walter have been the president and vice president of that civic association, I would guess 20 years. I mean, I ran for city council in '09, and I met with them. And they had been in place in those positions. I met with them for like two hours because they didn't know me. And so they, it's the same two people. Nobody ever runs against them and stuff. And they are very much protective of their neighborhood, very much. And they always told me, they said, there's a big plot of land behind Big Y. And they were worried that we'd get a Walmart or a Target or something. And then we really have traffic problems, and we really have other problems. So depending on your perspective of, you know, Amy's perspective might be, you know...
It's not mine. It's several people's.
Okay, well, that...
Many of them residents who are not happy with Walter's leadership on this.
So Walter hasn't done anything, though, that's the thing. We're all just, we're all just learning about. So please don't be edgy about it. I'm just trying, if I said something wrong, just correct me, but don't be edgy because I'm managing people who are struggling with your edginess on the city side, who don't like dealing with you. So that's not a good place to be.
I'm all right without the personal commentary, but thank you.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just telling you that, you know, what I want to do Tuesday, when we have this meeting about all these different perspectives, we got to leave the attitudes behind because nobody's doing anything to purposely do anything against anybody.
Including ours. Our attitudes need to be left behind, too.
Yeah, I agree. I usually don't have any, but, but this is, there's a lot of stuff going on in these three housing developments in that area, and now the solar farm. So I'm getting hit constantly with something from the different places. And, you know, Phil doesn't feel respected in how, and going through his stuff. Now we've got a question, I didn't even, Phil said, I'm not involved with solar. So that may be a choice that the city made, I don't know. I'm learning, I'm on day one practically.
Your zoning meeting, you can find that out.
Well, see, zoning, solar farms don't fall under, what you want to call it?
But is that a choice that the city made?
No, that's a good question. I don't know if it's a choice we made. You know, is it something where people heard about, said, oh, that's not me. That goes over there?
Right.
Or did they really look at it? I don't really know. I've invited Ellen Fryman to the meeting on Tuesday. And she's a lawyer, private lawyer, who's extremely knowledgeable on zoning. And she was involved in writing our zoning ordinance when we rewrote it. She was maybe the major, I won't say the major contributor, but a major person who wasn't a city employee. And so I invited her to come because I asked her last week, and she said, well, solar doesn't fall under 48, zoning 48, which is what Phil's, Phil's 48, which is, you know, the state law that manages all this stuff. Solar's not under that. I just found that out last week by just poking around and talking to somebody who, who knows about zoning. And she has zoned solar farms in, like Hinsdale and some outlying areas. Springfield has three or four solar farms already. One is in your area.
Yes, it is.
Were you involved in that?
I was not.
Before you were on the council?
Yeah.
Is that by the lettuce, the place that makes the lettuce?
Not Woodbury Harvest, no.
Is that Wellspring?
It's on Goodwin Street, I believe.
The old shape, Chapman Valley?
Yeah.
So it's, we're all on it. I don't know if people are just saying, I don't want to be involved, or they legitimately aren't involved. But that's what Tuesday's meeting is partly about. So...
Can I interject?
Vern does have his hand up, so I do want to give him an opportunity. Are you done, Counselor?
I'm also, Vern.
Thank you, sir. Vern?
Yeah, I just wanted to say it's both encouraging and painful to hear that if we'd been in touch with NextGrid four years ago, this might have moved in a different direction.
Right.
So I appreciate your sensitivity to... So I I appreciate your sensitivity to, uh, the concerns that we're raising. Um, I just wanna double check that, does that mean that a pivot now is impossible? I mean, what, cause again, I'll just say that there's you know, the opposite opportunity from those parking lots, which, you know, are heat, uh, gen- heat absorbing and generating um, parcels of land that would be a double win for, uh, a solar farm there. Um, so I don't know, where, uh, where does the ownership? Who owns this particular plot of land right now? Is it still in Stop and Shop's ownership? You've given them some money, but is it still, they still in control of it or what?
Correct, so the, we have a relationship with Stop and Shop, and that's how we found this land, they gave us a list of properties that they own and asked if any of these would work for solar. Um, we, if you look at our track record as a company, we do not do a lot of clear cutting. We've done, uh, some of the largest parking lots in Massachusetts, we we do a lot of former sand pits. Um, this, and and we've tried to be convincing Stop and Shop to to do their parking lots, not just here, but all over for a long time, and
Oh, really? Wow.
They feel it interferes with their signage and are not interested, um. If tomorrow you said they would allow it, and we could keep our same interconnection and move it across the street, you know, sure. But I don't, I don't think that's a realistic possibility. Um, there are things that we'd be happy to do to accommodate. You know, it's obviously more expensive for us to do pollinators than a grass mix. Uh, we could have expanded the the solar facility to the fifty foot wetlands buffer. We could have eliminated the eighty feet of natural buffer towards the street. Um, we went into this trying to make, we we knew what kinda neighborhood we were in. Um, we knew from the owners that they had tried to do residential developments here before, there was a lot of neighborhood opposition. Uh, mostly traffic related, so we really have been going out of our way to be low impact. Um, but, I mean, this project's already in construction financing with the bank, it's really a bad time to be finding out that there's
Yeah.
Organized opposition to what what we're doing, and we're not, we don't wanna be bad guys, it's not.
No, no, I, you know, I actually, I I understand that, and I I hear the, your sensitivity to these concerns. Uh, who, if we wanted to like approach Stop and Shop? I mean, whi- which I think this, the Springfield Climate Justice Coalition would like to do regardless of this project. You know, to really do, to find out more about what the issues are about. Putting solar farms over parking lots, which have been successful several places, who would we talk to?
So I would know. Uh, I'd have to talk to the guy that does project acquisition with us, that has a direct relationship with them, he's actually the one of the two owners of our company, so I can get the contact information from him. I come from planning, I do the permitting and and stuff like that, I'm not in the the actual land, uh, acquisition team or anything like that, so.
And I, yeah, and and Vern, I actually have a contact at Stop and Shop, and I asked her about the business corporation, so she just sent me the, um, name of a person that we can talk to, so maybe we could reach out to her. I'll send that to you, Vern.
Okay, that'd be great.
Alright.
And what is the meeting that's next Tuesday, Tim? Hey, Tim, hello, Tim, this is Vern, you're off camera.
I'm right here in the, in the meeting room, I'm not, I'm going anywhere. You just can't see me, I'm sitting next to Zeta.
Oh, what's the meeting next Tuesday that you were?
It's a meeting that, there've been, with all these housing, the three housing developments, West Crystal Brook and Crystal Brook. The one behind Stop and Shop, which is, um, proposed by Frank Fitzgerald. And the one, um, next to Socialite Cafe, those three are all in Ward Seven.
Is that a committee meeting?
No, it's not a city council meeting, cause I'd have to get
Okay.
I, uh, because there've been a series of issues that have come up. Water, groundwater, traffic, trees, et cetera. Um, and I had asked Phil Dromy to present, I had, I think I asked Scans to to invite Phil to a meeting to to talk about the state laws that he has to follow when he's doing. He's a preliminary guy, he's the, he's the planning guy. And because there've been some, um, and and he hasn't really presented anywhere, um. So I decided to set up a meeting myself where Phil could present, and we could have open discussion on the different uh, classifications of issues, the different issues that have been coming up. Groundwater, traffic, um, trees and anything else, and the solar is kinda similar to that, it just doesn't go through Phil, it goes through T P W.
Oh, okay, alright, I understand, yeah, thanks, Tim, thanks.
So it's just a, kind of a chance to hear everybody, everybody else's opinion, and 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 figure out how to go forward together.
Right. Okay, thank you, um, Tim, um.
Can I have a chance, Phil?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, and then Alex, so Alex, I'll get to you after this.
Um, so I I wanted to just, um, interject that, um, that you know, I wanted to correct what you were saying, because I think there's some kind of misunderstanding that I'm speaking for myself when I'm speaking for a group of you know, twenty members in Springfield Conservation and Nature Stewardship and six people that came to us who are not happy with with Walter's leadership, so I was just and a- as a woman who is often in con- in these conversations, I really ha- find it troubling that when men call me edgy. I I really think that's problematic language, and I think that men need to find a different way to approach a woman who's trying to make a strong point. Um, so, um, I would just say that, you know, we we would, you know, we reached out to S N S Corp, but because we didn't have inside information, like, we got like a form letter and then like nothing to any of our communications, so it would be great. Um, and then our other thing I wanted to say is, we knew that the solar didn't go through zoning, so we knew weeks ago uh, Jay Latori and I, so I need to really thank Jay, cause he's an amazing researcher. So we already knew, the minute we saw the dirt road cutting in, Jay researched it and said, like this is not gonna go through any of the regular procedures, so we already knew that at scans. Um, and we already knew that we were gonna have to do this either by reaching out to S N S or Stop and Shop or by, um, having residents maybe try to to work with you all, and it's great that you're receptive to this. Um, and but, and whenever anybody in our group gets concerned, the concern is never never that parks, forestry, planning or building are not following state or city laws. Our concern is the lack of communication, that we always find out when the dirt road is already being cut. When the, you know, when the item is already in front of the planning board. So our concern is never that something unethical or immoral or illegal is going on. Our concern is that we're residents and taxpayers, and yet we find out about projects when the physical construction is already underway. So that's our concerns, but, um, it's not anything about Phil Dromy or Alex or Pat or now Tom Ash. Um, so we just wanna make that clear, that, you know, we enjoy working with the city offices, and we enjoy the resources that the city has to offer. Um, but we would really love to see communication happen at the initial point of contact with these projects. Not years or months later when they are already in funding and already have equipment on the ground.
Thank you, Amy. Um, Alex, go ahead.
Actually, uh, councillor, I just had a, uh, I had a question early on, but, uh, it's been addressed, uh.
Okay.
I just announced more of a, of a commentary, I guess.
Okay.
Um, but I think, uh, I I find it how, how unusual that, um, a project of this magnitude or this size doesn't require any kind of permitting, doesn't require any kind of input from neighborhood council, and most importantly, doesn't require any kind of vote from the city council. Uh, I don't know if that is unique to solar, um, but if it is, that that's, that's certainly something that we have to pay full attention to, not not to be disparaging to to this man's company or the goals that they have, it's not about that, but but there are obviously residents that are gonna be impacted by this, uh, as well as some environmental concerns, so I guess it just, uh, in in my eyes, it it requires a little bit more uh, thought around the process, and how how this occurs, and and who has a say in in how it occurs, so, again, I I'm new here, but, uh, but it seems to me that in in all my experience in government, that some project like this requires a a a series of of uh, it doesn't seem like that is required here, and that's, that's all.
I agree with you, um, Alex, and I'm hoping maybe with the meeting that, um, Tim is having on Tuesday that we could find a way to maybe put some kind of like, uh, speed bumps in place when projects like this come, because the the state wants to meet, uh, the net neutrality by twenty fifty, so of course, they want as many solar farms, as many solar um, options available, but if we're, you know, clear cutting a whole bunch of trees, which is and then put up a solar farm, that's gonna like zero that out, so that was like, we did nothing. Um, so putting some speed bumps into the process, I think that might be something that we can do on the city council eventually, right? Um, if we can work towards that, right? Because I agree, I don't think I want, you know, if someone goes to Indian Orchard and there's an empty lot, there's just, the next day, there's gonna be a solar farm there. Um, and they're gonna cut a whole bunch of trees, I don't think our neighbors would be happy with that either, so, um. Finding a way to to slow that down a little bit, at least to go through the process like everybody else goes through. Um, you know, solar is great, um, but again, I think, you know, taking into account the damage that we're doing if we're cutting down a whole bunch of trees, and then putting up a farm like that, is is not gonna be very helpful for us. I guess another question I had, and maybe for you, I don't know, who's gonna benefit from that solar farm, right? Because ever so, you know, our prices are going up, I I started getting a bill again, cause I have solar on my house, but um, so I pay zero throughout the year until a certain point, um, so who's gonna benefit from that, from that solar?
Yeah, so this is through the Massachusetts Smart Program, uh, they do have a community solar element, which we uh, participate in, so it's a low income community solar, uh, project. Um, and if people opt in, so that you get no direct benefit unless you choose to opt in, so you go to a website, you say, I wanna subscribe to this solar farm, and then you get a bill credit, um, so it's somewhere between one and two cents per kilowatt hour off your bill.
Hmm.
Um, it's not massive amount of money per month, but over twenty years, you're saving thousands of dollars, so.
That's only for low income residents?
Low income get priority, so it has to be fifty one percent has to go to low income, and then forty nine percent can go to any, anyone.
Okay. And then again, that's, maybe that's another thing that we are not aware of, right?
Yes.
Probably somewhere in the, in our electric bill somewhere, but who reads all that stuff?
Yeah, we, there's a, we hire a company that does outreach once, once the, you've actually subscribed.
Okay, great, great. Perfect. Alright, so great, so it's, um, I think this has been a productive meeting, right? I believe, you know, as a city councillor, that my job again is to make sure that we hear the concerns of the residents and we bring them to us, and then we have to find a way to, if there's a problem, fix the problem, so I really appreciate what you said, Alex. And I'm hoping that at some point, our body can do something about that, right? Because, um, any, like, just with liquor stores, you know, I don't want a liquor store popping up every time I, you know, I open my eyes, so we have those uh, steps in place to slow that down if it's going to happen, and I think we should do the same thing with this. Especially, uh, with clear cutting, right? Um, if you're gonna put up a solar farm in a parking lot, um, that'd be awesome. You know, I think still, of course, getting permissions or or just approvals would be good, but I think, um, not necessarily having to just come in and just do it without, you know, hearing, um, what the resident's concerned, and I appreciate that you went to the Outer Belt. Um, but I I don't think that that's the only, um, entity that is gonna be affected, because like, you know, you said, a mile away, it's not, those trees are cooling neighborhoods, right? A mile away or more than a mile away, um, so I think getting input from a lot more people is always helpful. Um, so again, is there any other last comments from anyone? Thank you, Pete, and, um, Tom for coming on, you guys didn't say anything, but thank you. Did you have something else, Councilor Allen?
Yeah, that was Tom Ash, right, that just went a little while ago, right?
Well, that was, I think that was Pete, um, no, that was Alex.
That was Tom.
It was Tom, um, oh, okay, it's Tom, I'm sorry.
Alex spoke first, and then Tom.
Go ahead.
And Alex, um, so thanks, Tom, for for sitting in on this, uh, there's a lot going on in Ward Seven on these different initiatives, uh, to develop, to develop initiatives, um. Alex, um, I'm not sure if you knew about this Tuesday meeting. I gave a a list of
So, I planned on attending.
Yeah, he said he could attending.
So you do know about it and you're attending, alright, that's great. It's at Tapley at that development, that room, right as you go into Tapley.
Yeah.
Alright, that's great, uh, and Tom, you're certainly welcome to attend. It's merely a kind of an airing of the different things, listening to Phil talk about uh, the restrictions he has in in following a development process that that he has to follow, but also some offshoot issues. Um, that are, you know, as I said earlier in this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, yeah, and, um, I thought I had something else to ask you, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, maybe you could give me the, you don't seem to know who you've dealt with in the city.
Well, I I have the information.
Figure out with the Fuston O'Neil people.
Yeah.
And see who they've been dealing with, just.
Yeah, we'll send you the permit that we received, or the piece of paper we received from Springfield, it's signed, so.
And Vern was hoping to get the name of the S N S Business Corp contact.
Uh, yeah, I borrowed it, and I must have left it on the car.
And and I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Amy, what's your, what's your phone number, Amy?
I put you guys in an email together.
Yeah, I'll I'll send you a separate. Thanks, Vern.
Want the whole world to?
Yes. I think everyone here has it, actually.
Yeah.
Excellent, well, I wanna thank you all again for coming out, for being, um, able to communicate with each other. And, um, you know, help us figure things out, of course, you know, nothing is going to be solved in one meeting, especially, um, when it comes to city stuff, it takes a long time. But I appreciate everybody being here and us thinking about how we're going to be environmentally friendly, you know, um, keeping, uh, our environment in mind all the time, so, um, again, thank you, and, um, I look forward to seeing you all again.
Thanks, Zeta, thanks, very much, Yovon.
Thanks, Zeta, for the meeting.
Thank you.